Good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of the Somersville City Council on this 23rd day of May 2022. I'd like to welcome all of our guests this evening and move right into tonight's agenda. The first item on that agenda is the consideration of the council minutes from the meeting we held on May 9, 2022.
Move the way.
Okay, we got a first.
Second.
And a second. Counsel, are there any questions, any discussion, amendments, or changes to the minutes as they were presented in your package? Okay, hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. Public comment. I know Mr. Baker signed up, we're all good. No public comment. Okay, tonight, we welcome to council chambers the next item on the agenda, Forestry Council update and presentation from our chairman Kenny Baker, and he's also here to present us with an award, and I'll save all that for you Kenny.
Okay, thank you Mayor.
Our Mr. Baker.
Good evening Mayor, Recorder, City Council. Thanks for having me here this evening. I'll be brief. The Summersville Forestry Council was formed by an ordinance by this body back in probably 15 or 20 years ago, a long time ago. Anyway, we managed to take care of the trees on public properties within the city of Somersville, and we take out any, we deal with the public homeowners on occasion to take out dead or diseased trees and things like that. Have, all the trees that are planted on public properties, we maintain them, we keep them trimmed and pruned and mulched. We're starting the mulching within the next couple of weeks for all the trees around at Summersville Grade School and here at the pavilion around there and up at the hospital, we'll do it, that mulching again this spring and probably again in about August or September. But anyway, I want to thank you for your generous contributions when it comes to budget times and just, you know, glad to serve in this capacity as chairman of the Forestry Council and to serve this body and the citizens of Somersville. But Tree City USA is a program run by the Arbor Day Foundation to encourage the valuation and celebration of trees. We must meet four standards to qualify as a Tree City USA city, which is the city of Somersville. We have done that for the past 14 years in a row as part of the awards that we've gotten that I'll present in a minute. But those standards that must be met, number one, there must be a tree board or department, which the Somersville Forestry Council is that board for this body. We must have a tree ordinance, which the city, we do have a tree ordinance. Number three, it must be a community forestry program with a budget of at least $2 per capita for the population of the city, and we meet that multiple folds over. And the fourth thing is we must have an Arbor Day proclamation each year, which you all did, I think, last month, probably the first part of April, and then an observance. And this year, we had a really good observance. We handed out trees to all the fifth graders at Summersville Grade School. We gave out, I think I had 75 red maple trees, and they were about 12 to 14 inches tall, and they were individually potted. And Summersville Grade School really stepped up this year, and they put on a nice program for us. The mayor was there, and who else? Rick Ballstick from my board and Craig Chapman from my board was there at that program, so I appreciate that. But they put on a real good program, didn't they Mayor?
They sure did.
And so that was nice. And then we gave out prizes. They did posters for what trees meant to them, that's fifth graders here in the city. And we gave out prizes for, first prize through fourth place prizes. And so the fifth graders were really appreciative of that, and like I say, they really stepped up this year and put on a nice program for us. So we did meet those four things, but of course, my predecessor, I give kudos to him, Fred, he started this 14 years ago, and we've qualified 14 years in a row. And these particular things go on, there's a sign, I don't know if you ever noticed it, as you come into Somersville at the Broad Street exit there beside the Dairy Queen, it's right up on the hill above the Dairy Queen, and then there's one of these on a sign out at, when you come into Somersville, at the McDonald's exit. So I'll get these, put on both those signs this week, and then they also gave us, give us a banner here. Ray, can we hold this, would you? Please? I got it upside down. Get that in right there. Maybe find someplace in here in City Hall we can display that for a while.
Yeah.
And so it is quite an accomplishment, and we've done it for 14 years in a row, so that's, that's all I have to report.
Hey Kenny, the only, the only thing, and this is just a minor oversight on your half, there was another school involved too?
Oh yeah, there did. Summersville Grade School and New Life Christian Academy.
Yeah, yeah.
Two great classes.
Yeah, they were, they were there as well.
Yeah.
And kids participated in that poster contest. So Kenny, on behalf of this body, we appreciate you. We know there's a lot of hard work that goes into that.
Thank you.
You've done an incredible job carrying the torch that Fred carried for many years, and of course, it takes you and your entire team. And that's one thing about our community, we're blessed that people step up like you and the entire council to continue doing this for. So what I'd like to do is, Mike, because you're on the forestry, if you'd step down here with Kenny, and then Amy, will you take a picture? If you guys will hold that up in front of us, everybody gather in here, let's get a picture to put, just see if I can get my camera. Here you go Amy, if you'll take a picture. Oh, you want to take it from yours? Oh, that's good, that's good, yep. Get a picture, y'all get in here. Come on Steve. Chuck, we can't see you way over there.
She might, she might have a wide angle in.
I can't see Chuck. All right, one, two, three.
All right, good deal. Okay, thank you Forestry Council.
Thank you Kenny. Kenny, do you have a, actually mulch? I don't know if that's where the golf course or in the memorial park, do they have mulch? Do they have to do their own mulch? Yeah, yeah, they have.
Here Kenny, I'll take the flag.
Okay.
Yeah, we might even try to bring down our city flag and fly this for a while out there on Flag Day.
That'd be great, thank you Kenny.
What kind of trees would you get out?
Red maple.
There gonna be lots of red maples around all over here.
Yeah, I hope they all, most of them got planted, yeah.
And they also got a class on planting them, so.
One thing I did, I will report, Craig Chapman got with me, there was a dead tree up there right at the corner of the tennis court and the roads there at the corner, and we had, I had that taken out just briefly, and there was two dead pine trees down there about past the pool that we as a forestry council took out, and then I planted a red maple there to replace that, that tree that we took out at the corner of the tennis court, because it's probably six, eight feet tall. So I noticed, I was up there Saturday, and you know how hot, scorching hot it was on Saturday? That tree was kind of driven a little bit, and I said, oh, we need some rain, and of course, this rain really, I'm sure screws back up now.
Oh yeah.
Got this rain. So yeah, I do, I work with the park when I can. Yeah, I didn't know about that, because I see some of them that needs mulched. Yeah, yeah. But I didn't know if the.
Okay, back to council.
Thank you, thank you Kenny.
Thank you Kenny.
Well, I'll say this, they've done a great job so far out there at that park.
Yeah.
Getting it back up and.
Yeah, it looks great.
Sproosed up.
Okay, moving right along, the next item on the agenda would be the first reading of a proposed water rate ordinance. So what we'll do, counsel, is we'll, I'll go ahead and read the ordinance, we'll put it in the form of a motion, and then we'll open it up for discussion. So first thing I want to make note here is, I'm not going to read through this entire document. What I'm going to do is I'm going to highlight the rate increase as a whole, the ordinance number, and the minimum charge, and then of course, it scales up by the size of line you use and the amount of water you use. But I do want all of the citizens to know that this is the, this is the first reading, which we have to have a public comment and a second reading, which will take place at the next meeting. And these ordinances are available for anybody that wishes to come and see them in detail. You can access that here at City Hall. So starting first item on the agenda would be the water ordinance, 90, or 935.01, an ordinance amending the water ordinance to increase fees. Unfortunately, this is a 25% increase in our minimum rate charge, which when I say that, it affects that going all the way up. So the minimum glade creep charge for water on the city of Somersville, which is 2,000 gallons, would be 3566 per month, and the minimum rate for the city of Somersville customers for the 2,000 gallons is 27.06 per month. And then of course, the rest of the ordinance includes everything that it has to adjusted per our water rate. And of course, all of this is done in compliance with provisions with the Public Service Commission Rule 42.2.8.1. So I have, I have, that's in just the foundation of the ordinance, there's a whole lot in this. If anybody is interested in their particular rate and how it affects them, they can certainly come to City Hall and/or call, and we will facilitate that information for you. So now at this time, I need a first.
So move.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, and now we have discussion. And you know, the thing I will say is, is just as a brush, this entire body, you know, this isn't a good thing for any of us, and I think all of us on this body are very concerned about the economically tough times that we're in right now. And you know, the last thing that people need to hear is that, you know, that something else is increasing. Unfortunately, what I will say is, last year, as we have weathered the pandemic, and now we're in an inflation, you know, last year, we did not meet our debt covenants, which is to the standard that we have to maintain for our bond, which is 115%. We were below that last year. And so, you know, in all reality, you know, one could say or surmise that we probably should have looked at this a year ago. Now unfortunately, you know, this is based on fiscal year 2021, not current revenues. And of course, what is real unfortunate is, I don't know that these rate increases will outpace what we're facing with inflation. So with that said, I'll open it up for any comment from anybody here on this body.
I think, I've been approached by a few people that, you know, saw this on TV station last time, mentioned of it, and of course, they're concerned about it, especially seniors, especially my wife, since she's our finance manager now, my house. We pay a lot of water bill, water rate, but this is, it's an unfortunate time, and I guess if we had perfect knowledge about what was going to happen with prices, inflation, I guess we could make for sure a clear cut choice. However, I think, I think we have to do something as far as rate increases go, because we are in violation of our, our cash flow to debt service ratio, which the state requires. So the question is, and has been in my mind for several days, and I've looked at some of these rates and numbers quite a bit, and the question is, how far do you go at this time with it, as far as how big of an increase to support which, what debt covenant target that we're trying to meet? And the consultant has recommended, I think, debt, cash flow debt service ratio of 160 for one of them and 180 for the other, which produces quite a bit of revenue, especially compared to the current requirement of 115. So that's what this ordinance shows, is that kind of a, an increase as far as our debt service ratio goes. So I feel very good that in light of maybe something extreme that this will carry us forward for the next several years, I would think, but who knows about that? So there's always going to be a question in my mind, and I guess, looking back, we'll be able to tell what we should have done, maybe, but we have to do something now. So this is what the consultant recommended, and he is CPA, and also I talked to our finance director today and also Friday about this, and she's in full agreement that we need to do something. It's just a matter of, in my mind, of how much we do now versus maybe looking at a lower rate now, but then we might very well have to revisit the issue maybe a couple of years, two, three years from now. So it's, it's a big question.
Yeah, I mean, Councilman Epling, I mean, I, I mean, I can't agree with, or I cannot disagree with anything that you said, because I mean, it's, it all makes sense. You know, last time, he made recommendations, and I felt through management, we didn't have to go as high as he recommended, and we did not. I don't have the exact, I don't have those exact numbers tonight, but I know that we did not go with the full recommendation. But unfortunately, you know, really what happened is, we ended up needing another rate increase three years out from the last increase. And ideally, when, you know, when you take an increase, I don't, you know, I guess I don't even know what the standard is, how long a rate increase should carry you. But had we taken what he recommended last time, you know, it probably would have carried us longer, and by all reality, what we should have done is visited about a year ago a rate increase. But of course, that was certainly not popular during a pandemic, and there's just so many, there's just so many iffy factors that are weighing into anything that's happening today. And you know, the last thing that we cannot afford to do is to in any way, I'm even nervous now, and, and, and you know, Jim, you've made some very valid points tonight, and you even made a few earlier to me, and it's going to cause me to go back and visit again, because we got another, we've got another reading. I mean, we have another reading and a public meeting. So nothing is final tonight. I'm going to go back and reexamine some of the things that you, that you've said tonight, Jim, just to double check, and make sure that I'm as solid as I feel I am. I don't want to raise anything. I don't want anybody to have to take a raise. But what I'm already concerned about is the cost of materials and the cost of fuel that is, is absolutely eating our budget alive right now. And then, you know, I was, I was mentioning to Jim earlier about, we went to the centrifuge down at the wastewater treatment plant, and lo and behold, that was supposed to save us money, well now it's costing us money because there's a shortage on polymer. And polymer has to be applied to the, to the material before it can be, it's got to be mixed in before it can be land, the land application piece can happen. And lo and behold, we're up and running, and now can't get polymer. And so, so I just think that at the end of the day, you know, what we can afford is to get so far behind that we're chasing our tail and say, man, how did we get in this mess? So it, you know, I hate it, I'm sensitive to, you know, to, to the people that are going to struggle at paying all the increases. I mean, I'm thinking even about fuel getting to and from work. Now, I will tell you this, there, there, I don't want to, I don't want to give any false pretense, but we have another round of American Recovery Monies coming, and maybe we could take some of those monies up and set up some kind of fund to help people. We'd have to check the legality out of that, but in the short run, maybe there's things that we can do to identify people that truly need help, and you know, how we can take some of those monies and help people. I don't know. But you know, I know people need relief, and this is the last thing anybody needs to hear, but also what we cannot afford to is, and it's just, there's no other way to say it, we can't bankrupt our utilities. And so it's just, right now, it's a guessing game. It's like throwing darts in the dark, because we just don't know where we're at with this, with this inflation, and then what's going to happen after that? Is it, you know, is it recession, and then what does that do to us? I don't, I don't know.
Well, we just can't get caught in the guessing game again with the inflation and all this stuff that's going on with the cost of plastic pipe and, and not only the cost, but the availability. You know, so I think it's time to bite the bullet and.
You know, just to give people some examples, we, we priced out a small, a small lift station for a new 12-unit apartment complex that's potentially going to go in, not in city limits, right outside of city limits. We priced out that, that small lift station, and it was a little over $40,000. And back in, back pre-pandemic, that lift station probably would have been 20, 21,000. So we went to the city attorney, because we do a public-private partnership on stuff, both the water that we're hooking up and the utilities. We take care of the sewer, although we get signed documents that so that, so long from construction that they have to hook up, or if they don't, they have to start paying minimum usage. There is a private-public partnership in the water where they actually have to pay some of it because of the fire pressure system that has to be put in the unit. And, and from the time that we priced that stuff out and went back to get the documents ready, which was less than 45 days, the cost on the lift station had already gone up two grand more. And, and those are costs that we're going to absorb in the utilities. And, and it's just, you know, I mean, and I know, you know, it's, it's tough times. I mean, you know, I'll tell you, you know, I'm going to get to something here in a little bit, you know, about a partnership that we've entered with Seneca on baby, baby formula. I mean, it's just, people's got it tough right now, and this is awful, and I know none of us want to do it, but we also got fiscal responsibilities to what we're entrusted to care for here. So I will though, take a, take a deeper dive, and I'll even go back to the Michael Griffith, the certified guy that did our rates, and has worked all these financials, which he is a Public Service Commission rate CPA, certified guy, I mean, he's, he's one of the two go-to guys that do this for all kinds of utilities in the great state of West Virginia. So I'll go back and dot i's and cross d's, because if we could get away with less, trust me, we'll do less.
I appreciate you.
I will.
I appreciate you talking about this.
I will, I will do that Jim.
Something else we want, we might want to consider, I just thought of this, you know, with people out there that are having, you know, increased cost under this thing, and may want to reduce their water usage, maybe we could find some way to help them reduce water consumption within their own houses or something. I don't know if that would be possible or not.
Yeah. So our minimum, our minimum rate is 2,000, and really, when, when I brought those rates to you last time and showed you 3,000, 2,000 is actually a better minimum rate limit to use, because most seniors don't use 2,000. So in the area, when people use 3,000, and, and there's a lot of rate movement all over us. As a matter of fact, you know, we had a, we had a hearing last week, I attended on behalf of the city with the Golly River PSD, and I mean, everybody around us has got rate movement. They've all got projects and rate increases, and you saw the rates as they sit right now, and there's a whole lot of rate movement going on everywhere else too. And of course, it's not really sometimes fair to do apples for apples, but as much as I hate it, as everything washes out, we're still going to have some of the best rates in the county. And, and so I'm totally confident that from a managerial standpoint, from fiscal management, and that's all aspects of it, to what we buy, supplies, and how we utilize our personnel, that we've got it tuned. It's just right now, what we're combating is what everybody else is to exist as utility.
Mayor, one thing, if you could go into a little bit of explanation, one of the biggest things I have said to me all the time is, if the city is so well off financially, why do we ever have to take rate increases? And I mean, all of us know that there's different financial departments, and none of that can be mixed, but I think a lot of people don't understand that. The utility department has its own finances, the city department has its own finances, and those cannot legally be mixed together.
That is, that is, that is.
Well, and not only that, you know, the two of them can't be financially mixed, but we can't take other funds to support.
Yeah, that's what I've tried, and trying to explain that to some.
Yeah, yeah, so, so by, by law, the, a utility has to be rated as its own financial stability, utility, or in our case, utilities. So you cannot set rates and/or manage fiscally your utility with bringing other funds in, because then what happens is, if those other funds are not available for whatever reason, or, or you just can't. Even back to when I first became mayor, and we went to, we went to thinking that we, the city could loan the utility, bring some money into the utilities to help settle a utility lawsuit, that was not legal. The utilities had to handle the lawsuit and the settlement of the lawsuit, not the city. And so you can't co-mingle those monies. And, and, and so I know sometimes it's hard, I mean, sometimes I don't even get it, like, why can't we do this? And I can tell you that we've really ironed a lot of things out, because let me tell people this, if you ever see any utility worker doing anything other than working on utilities, they're not being paid by the utilities. And that is something that we, that we, that we have changed and sharpened up real fine way back when. So when you see, when you come to the potato festival and you see utilities, utility workers working, they're not being paid on their, on their, on their, on the utilities payroll, they're on the city of Somersville payroll.
Their payroll's split.
Their payroll is split. They get, they get a check from the city of Somersville and, and their utility. Those, those, we don't even co-mingle that. Yeah, we don't use utility workers to do non-utility work. If they're doing non-utility work and getting paid, they're getting paid by the city of Somersville. Actually, their payroll comes through the street department when they do any, any extracurricular duties. They, they're paid, they're paid through the street department.
I think we could probably all do a better job of communicating, you know, more thoroughly with the public. Another question or concern I get sometimes is about the hydro money. They say, well, you know, we're getting all the hydro money, and how can we, can we support the, the water rates by hydro money and that kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, if we were to bring city monies into the utilities, that would be, that would be a finding every autumn. I mean, we would get gigged on that every autumn.
But, but that's one.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, I know sometimes it's, I mean, even initially, you know, back when I started my mayorship, that's, that was hard for me to understand. I mean, you know, when we, like I say, I mean, one of the things that I couldn't understand when we settled the lawsuit, why can't we use city money to settle the lawsuit? You can't do that. And if you remember, what we ended up doing is taking a loan through the utilities, and then we added it to the bond of a project when we settled, when we settled a project. So that's how we ended up, you know, managing, settling that lawsuit, is we financed the debt.
So it has to be managed in separate.
Absolutely. And there is, yep, and there is no co-mingling of funds. It's, it's two separate entities, the city of Somersville, and you know. And you know, you know, what we are is we're just like all these public service commission boards. You all get, you, you all get separate financials, you get utility financials and you get city of Somersville financials. And, you know, so really, you know, we're unique and a lot of cities are just like us. They handle both the utilities. So, in essence, we're the utility board, like what public service district boards are for their utilities. You know, Golly River, Matty Levy Sea, Birch River, Wilderness, all of them have utility boards that are just like us, that, that manage the finances and responsibility of the utility.
Yeah, I think it's a board for people to know that.
Yeah.
It's a good attitude.
Good point, yeah, absolutely.
Explain it because it, because it is hard, I mean.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's, it's hard to get people to understand.
Yeah, no matter how well off financially you are, you cannot co-mingle with utilities.
So, Council, I will assure you, between now and the next meeting, I'll take a deep dive and make sure that there's, there's nothing we can do to make that increase less. And I'll go back to Michael, go back to the table and make sure that unequivocally, there's no chance that there's something we can do less. And certainly if there is, I'll let you know, okay? So we have a first and a second. This is on 9/35.01, water ordinance, 25% rate increase. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion so carries. Now, Council, we get down to 9/35.02, which is an ordinance amending the sewer ordinance to increase fees on sewer. And your minimum charge will go to $33.34 per month, and that is a 20% increase. Again, this ordinance will be available to all citizens by either coming to City Hall if you would like and/or call in City Hall. If you, if you're not a minimum customer and you're curious as to what it'll do to you, we can certainly take care of those questions by contacting or coming to City Hall. So what I'll do is entertain a motion.
So move.
We have a first.
Second.
And a second. And now discussion, which would be real similar to what we just said and echo, echo everything, you know.
I'm going to. Yeah, that's what it is.
And you know, it's, it's important that the citizens know, and I mean this sincerely, there is not one of us sitting up here that, that ever would want to put some kind of a financial burden on any household. And of course, as we all know, there's all, a lot of households already financially strapped and stressed. And so we will continue to work to make sure that we run efficient and effective utilities. And if there's anything that we can do, be it with these rates and/or other programs, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna look at it.
Well, I mean, look around the room. We've got several folks here that are already retired, living on fixed incomes. We have to live with this same rate increase. I don't like it any better than anybody else, but it is what it is. We've got to survive and if we want to provide the services, it takes money.
Well, I was thinking about too, what, you was talking about American Water, someone that wasn't buying this water. And they'd have been a lot higher.
Oh, yeah. Their rates, their rates are a lot higher and actually.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, and actually they just, again, I, I guess I don't really want to go into that discussion, but I know they have, they've got another rate increase that's been proposed and I don't know what the status of it is.
That's the second one since we started.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't even want to go there because I don't, I don't, I'm not.
I know, from what I understand, everybody sits there way higher.
Yeah, I mean, I've looked at, gave you all the rates and then, you know, even in that hearing that I was in last, last week at the Public Service Commission over Golly River PSD, there's a lot of projects that other utilities are doing, they're behind the power curve financially already. And, and, and there's some significant rate increases that they're, that they're needing just to bring their systems up to a standard and in some cases, operational standards. So, you know, it's, you know, we've all heard the woes of other utilities in this county. And let me tell you, you know, with much pride, you know, Somersville is a fine-oiled and well-maintained utility. And, you know, it's, it's entrusted in us that we keep it that way. And so, again, I mean, I, I, you know, I hate this. I mean, 20 and 25% just is outrageous. But it's just, our hands are tied and, and, and you know, what we're going to do is we're going to do our damn best, yes, I cuss, to make sure that we don't have to take another increase in the near future. And we've got a lot of work to do with what we're dealing with, with inflation, so.
I'd like to also second that notion about the utility department, it's outstanding.
Yeah. We're, we're lucky to have.
Yeah, one of the best.
We do, we're, we're lucky, I mean.
Very fortunate.
Yep, you just think about the other woes we hear about all around us and we, we've got good crews and they respond 24/7 and, you know, we're just in good shape. Okay, so with the unfortunate in this, we've already passed the 25 on the, on the water. This is the first reading, I want to make note of. The next meeting, we do have a public hearing and second reading on both of these ordinances. So, for the 20% on the sewer, we've got a first and a second. We've had discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion so carries. Okay, recorders report.
The only thing I have this evening, Mayor, is just, just to remind everybody, our next plan and meeting is June 6th at 6 o'clock.
Okay.
We will continue the tiny house.
It's on what date?
June 6th, Monday. We'll continue the tiny house and the Airbnb.
6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Recorder. Moving right along, Mayor's Report. Council, I've got a few things for you tonight. First of all, I want to remind everybody of the Wild Ridge Young Life Camp, Golly River Lodge ribbon cutting, which is June, June 5th, thank you, who said that? Did you, thank you, June 5th. I wrote everything down with the date. It's June 5th, Council, and that actually goes from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. The ribbon cutting is actually at 3:00 PM. So please, if you can, make it out there to Wild Ridge Young Life Camp for that ribbon cutting of their Golly River Lodge. And everybody's invited, the entire public's invited. So anybody that wants to come out, you're invited to come out to the ribbon cutting. The next thing I'd like to talk about is Seneca Health Services. And they are having a ribbon cutting and grand opening of their new location. And of course, it's on Wellness Drive, which if you haven't spotted the new building, it's right there on the hill next to Burger King. I'm calling it the new Seneca Health Services campus. They've got two businesses, their, their big main office building located up there along with their treatment building or housing, rehab housing unit that they have up there. So Council, their grand opening is on May 26th, which is this Thursday, at 2:30. And I would invite any of you that can make it to please come. Unfortunately, myself and the recorder both have prior commitments and that will be, will not be able to attend. So I want to congratulate Seneca for their new location and expansion of your campus. Seneca Health Services has a rich history of providing the best mental health care in our great state. Marcy, I congratulate, Marcy is their CEO President. I congratulate her and her awesome leadership team as they plow through the challenges of today, taking their organization to new heights. Job well done to the entire Seneca Health Services team. So if you can, please make it to their grand opening. With that said, I would let you also know today that we have partnered with Seneca Health Services. City Hall will be one of two drop-offs. Since February of this year, there's been a major supply shortage in both regular and specialty baby, baby formula. So Seneca Health Services partnering with local community leaders to help with this shortage by serving as donation site. So you can, if you are out there and you have any baby formula that your baby can't use or that's still got good shelf life and you're not going to use, we encourage you to drop it off here at City Hall. They're going to put a drop-off box here at City Hall and/or at their new location up there on Wellness Drive, up there above. It's on the Bright, Bright of America Ri, Bright of America Road to the right of Burger King. Boy, that's a mouthful. Yeah, yeah. So anyway, this is important, as you all know, there's a major baby formula crisis in this country. It looks like the government just brought over a huge load from Germany this weekend. But as I understand it, that that's not going to hit the store shelves, that's going to hit the doctors' offices. And they're going to be giving that out through medical providers. So, anyway, I do know this is real, so if anybody's got some baby formula out there that they're not using, I encourage you to please bring it to one of these drop-off sites so that Seneca can get it redistributed. I appreciate Seneca stepping up as they always do, being the leader of this partnership and getting that formula redistributed if there's any out there that we can get turned around. The other thing I want to, to make note of, and this is important, Terra Estate residents, starting Tuesday, May 31st, the culvert that's on the main road coming into Terra has to be replaced. And we're going to start that project on the 31st, which is right after Memorial Day, the Tuesday after Memorial Day. We're in hopes, weather cooperating, that's going to be a three or four-day project. It'll be down to one lane getting in and out of Terra. So we're putting all the residents on notice and, and we ask that you be patient and cooperate with us. The bottom of that culvert is completely rusted out and we, it's a must. We have to get it changed out before we have any other issues. So, it'll start that Tuesday after Memorial Day and it's the hopes that we can get it done in three to four days with weather cooperation. So, just beware that that's going to happen and, and it'll be down to one lane. So people will just kind of have to be courteous coming and going from Terra until we get the, get a place to get the road repaired. The last thing I'd like to do is, in my Mayor's Report, is in remembrance of our heroes this coming Memorial Day, we, we wish all to have a memorable and safe weekend. Of course, it's going to be a rough one with gas, gas prices. I don't know that people can afford to travel like what we normally are accustomed to on Memorial Day weekend. Take time to honor those who have paid the greatest sacrifice for our awesome country. Honoring our heroes who have served to protect our flag and the very freedom we will enjoy this Memorial Day weekend. And I have to say, this is a famous quote, not my quote, but we may never forget that freedom isn't free. That concludes my Mayor's Report. Any Council reports? Okay, hearing done, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session. We have a first.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion so carries. We give about five minutes for Council.